Good morning, members. I'll call the meeting to order and just initially recognize that our Chair is recovering from surgery. I hope all goes well. Madam Chair?
You're on mute.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry. You must be on...
She's on mute.
There we go.
There you go.
Yes, good morning, everyone. And yes, I'm doing fine. I can't drive, but I'm doing fine. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. And I see we do have Mr. Dunbar with us. I think Ms. Edinburgh may be standing in later, or maybe your schedule has changed. Mr. Dunbar?
And you're on mute.
You're on mute as well, Pete.
I'm hoping she will join us shortly, but at the moment, there's another, she's had another issue she's dealing with.
So we'll transition that whenever the time comes and welcome, welcome her on our behalf. Having said that, let me ask the clerks to please call the roll.
Commissioner Cardillo.
Here.
Commissioner Layman.
Here.
Commissioner Lyle.
Here.
Vice Chair Goodlet.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. Let's please rise and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, members.
Michael, I don't think there's a need for any closed session this morning, is there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Public session, first, let's review and approve the minutes of the April 12th and April 26th meeting. Is there any discussion? Let's take the April 12th meeting first. Any conversation, any discussion or edits to those minutes, members? Seeing, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 12th meeting?
So moved.
Second, only second.
It's moved. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Show the minutes of the April 12th meeting approved as drafted. Next, the minutes of the April 26th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Comment, Chair, if I may.
Yes, comment first, please.
Just note that there's a form appended to April 26th that was not there before, and I will address that formally at the comments section at the end.
Okay, sir.
That's an 8B disclosure form.
Would that affect the minutes of this particular meeting?
Not in any other way, except they're attached.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Anything further? Any other, any changes, members, to the draft minutes of the April 26th meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
And move to approve the April 26th meeting. Any discussion? Any objection? Show the motion passage unanimously. The next thing on our report is obviously the Petronov opinion final for approval. It's been circulated. I know that Mike provided it to us late last week, or when the mid part of last week, we've had plenty of time to review it. So I'll open the floor for discussions. Or you want to make any introductory comments, Mike, to start with?
Good morning, everybody. Like you said, it's just on for final approval. I know Commissioner Lyle did a lot of editing, and hopefully those are all copacetic. So I hate to say that this should be a short meeting, because every time I say that, we end up going for about an hour and 45 minutes, but I think it's ready to go.
Thank you, Mike. Comments from Commissioners regarding the draft of the, that was circulated, of the Petronov? I had raised one issue with Mike yesterday with respect to the, one of the changes that was made, I think, in Commissioner Lyle's proposal previously was to describe the property as beach club property in all references. And over on page number four, and on other, a couple other places, the report addresses, and looking, I'm looking at the third paragraph from the bottom, beginning with "based upon the facts presented" on that page, and then down to the last line, or last two, it says approximately 30 properties abutting the development project to the north. And I'm thinking that that should say beach club property. Since beach club property is a defined term, I wouldn't like to have, I'd like to make sure there's no confusion about the property that we're talking about. And I think that reappears on a couple of other, in a couple of other places. You might want to just review carefully, Mike, and make those changes. I think it's just two or three, but I just noticed that difference. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Layman, you recognize?
I promised, Mike, not to go on for an hour and 45 minutes, but I remain concerned as to how we arrived at this conclusion. In Petronov, she raises three different potential voting conflicts. One is a conservation easement. The second is a zoning approval, and the third is a design review board appeal. These are three very different items, and in fact, they affect three different properties, and might be said to have three different impacts on adjacent properties, and we haven't really teased that apart. We've taken a test of percentage of owners. We've related that to state actions, which I understand, or at least was presented to us by our council, as roughly a 1% level of acceptability. I think any numerical thing like that, reducing such a complicated thing as changes in property values and so forth, to a simple rule of the number of people across the street being more or less 1% is not very nuanced, let's put it that way. It's pretty blunt and can lead to trouble. The reason I'm concerned is not about this decision, because I think it's, in the end, I find it approvable. It's sort of like you agree with the bottom line, but you have, I have a lot of trouble of how we got there. And so I raise this because I think these 975J voting conflict issues, this is now our second, the last one was Mr. Christman's last year about the Naples Community Hospital, will come up repeatedly. They will be the number one question that city council comes to us with, because they all have to live in town, those are the rules, and things will come up that will be in a certain adjacency to either their homes, or their business interests, or close relatives. It's inevitable. And I'd like, I'd like to raise those two things, not at great length, and later I'll have a suggestion how we might begin to move in a more reliable way to assess these. But I want to come back to the specifics of the Petronov request. The design review board appeal, I think, is remote enough that even having an, and across the street and so forth, this is how does a building look? Design review cannot change set box, they can't change heights, they can't change density or intensity. They simply look at the architectural features and how the property looks, which is not the kind of thing that makes a lot of difference in property values. Some, but not much. And it's also about the buildings that are a half a mile from Ms. Petronov's property, so not an issue here. Zoning and development is a little closer to home, but again, it's the same kind of thing that for Mr. Christman, we said, at least in a legislative mode, was not a problem, because it was citywide. Now we have the question that we did not address with Christman, is once you have a zone, now we have a specific property in the zone. We did not address that. We just addressed a building across the street.
But we weren't asked to, right?
In Christman? No. He failed to ask us, I think, a fundamental question, but we, so we couldn't answer it. So we have...
Thank you for interrupting. Go ahead.
No, thank you, Chair, for clarifying. Now we come to the conservation easement. Now, the conservation easement is specifically on the 70 acres of the property that aren't at the beach end, they're at the east end, and they are the properties that are directly across from Ms. Petronov's house. And I think that arguably, if I was sitting in a house there, I would say, let's see. There will be green space in perpetuity versus there will be a planned development with a sea of, let's just say that we're limited by current rules to 42-foot-high, three-story condominium buildings with all that goes with that, setback 30 feet across the street from her house, or anybody's house. You now get to the point where any reasonable person would raise the question of, has my house's value changed if across the street is beautiful green space, say a golf course, or a sea of developed residences, or anything else the city may allow to be developed there? And that is the issue that's before us. Unfortunately, given the press of legislative action, Ms. Petronov was faced with a vote on that specific question prior to our rendering a final decision. Not her fault, I don't think. Not our fault. We did our best, but we didn't get there, and we've decided still to issue the opinion. So it all becomes a little bit moot at this point. However, in our rendered opinion, we state, and I'm going to address this as if it was only about the conservation easement, we state, and thank you, Commissioner Lyle, for the careful review that you gave, and I do agree with your revision of the ownership numbers. We have a 1% state test. We have a document that states that however, you can count it different ways, but somewhere between 3.6 and 8.1% of the ownership is Ms. Petronov's, depending on if you count her multiple ones singly or... My distinct apologies. Let me just make sure that doesn't happen again. Well, how you multiply or singly count her ownership, and then you have another number. Now, I went back to when we dealt with Mr. Christman, his number was 12%. We didn't have a specific number of owners, but we said approximately 12% was in ownership, and we said he couldn't do that. So we have come to our own number. It's less than 12, but it's greater than 8%. That is what our two published opinions, should we approve this as it stands, will say to other people with the question. And the rules by which we sort of define this are very loose. How do we count houses? Is it just across the street? Is it 500 feet and so forth? It's kind of a mess. You can see where the problems are. I don't propose to go any farther today. I think that the number of owners that I would count would be much larger than we have chosen to count here, because I do believe that people who aren't just across the street are impacted. So I'm happy to proceed, because I don't think Ms. Petronov's conflict rises to the level of recusal. I think it's de minimis here, and I think that we should approve this. However, I guess, Mike, I'll just mention this now rather than waiting for comment, I would like us, over our possible summer break, who knows what will happen, to have Mr. Murawski and Mr. Dunbar tell us more about how we should deal with these special benefits. When you say the state has a rule of 1%, I've learned that it's not exactly that. There's a significant number of decisions on various bases, and I'd like us to know more about that. I'd like, when we look at these things, to do at least what the planning department does, which is to show us a map. Here is the actual property, because we haven't really dealt with this, I mean, there are parcels that are at the beach club, and have an actual map with a 500-foot or 1,000-foot radius, which is the city's rule, or any other such geographic decision-making that other people have applied. Because what we've got here is an ad hoc variable decision-making, that really the axis on which we are saying it turns is percentage of ownership. We don't really have a specific way to count ownership. We just sort of say, well, here's what we're going to do this time. And we sort of seem to have the across-the-street rule and nothing else, as if there's no helicopter overflights, traffic noise, and all of the other things that might go on with one of these decision-makings. So I would like to, in our September or October meeting, sit down and have Mr. Murawski and Mr. Dunbar discuss this at some greater length, and if the, if our today's Chair would permit, I would be happy to work with them on that, since it's clearly something that's a burr under my saddle. Or if you wanted clear legal opinions, you'd burden Mr. Lyle to do that. Yes, you, that one. But however you may so assign, but I think that this is going to be... The downstream effect that I would not like to see is that an unhappy person seizes upon some of the elements of our decision-making to get involved in litigation with the city, and our meanderings on the subject are subject to real judicial scrutiny and decision-making. And I think we can do better than we've done, and I think we should do, because I think this is going to come up. This is going to be the big hot-button issue that we have to deal with on these formal opinions. Thank you. I'll stop there, only by saying that in the end, I think, given the situation, our better course of action is to approve this as written, unless there are other suggestions or minor improvements. Thank you, Chair, for listening.
I'll ask for other members. Let me just comment just very briefly. I think, I think what we have to be sensitive to is answering the questions that were asked. And if it wasn't clear in the questions that were asked, that we feel like we need to go beyond answering those questions, I think that's a slippery slope, or could be, depending upon how much we want to ask the questions for them. So I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about how, but I have no, I have no problem with Mr. Murawski and Mr. Dunbar and Ms. Edinburgh discussing this and giving us their thoughts. But my, you know, I've assumed that these, these opinions that we render, or responses that we render are focused on, and we did, I think, on this one, pretty much, focus on, these are the questions that were asked, and these, these are the answers to those questions. And, and I guess for further discussion in accordance with your thoughts, is that we just need to have a more thorough vetting, if you will, of how we, how we can, can ensure that we are not, that we're not offering conflicting responses to similar questions.
May I respond, Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Or yield to Commissioner Lyle?
May I, Commissioner?
Commissioner Lyle.
Mr. Chair. I did not interpret Commissioner Layman's comments to fall outside of the question. What I, what I understood, and with which I agree, is that we've backed ourselves into a situation here where the numbers don't look good. And perhaps, I mean, I came here today ready to approve this in this form, but I wouldn't be opposed at all to a recognition that there's, I'm not sure there's a lot of rush now. Our next meeting's in three or four weeks. Maybe some, not an hour and 45 minutes worth, but some meaningful discussion could take place on a way to remove some of the substance of the analysis, so that we're not pinned in to an area here where we've said as much as 8% might be okay, or something like that. I probably fall in the category of, you know, I feel like I'm going to know it when I see it. I think the beach club, and I know that Commissioner Layman thinks that's an inappropriate process to go, because the people who are coming before us deserve a little more predictability. So I understand all of that. I do think that this project is unique. I understand that Commissioner Layman is distilling pieces of this project, just as the lawyers have had to do as different types of requests. But I think it's very appropriate to look at this as one big project, because I don't think you'd be talking about having 70 acres of dedicated green space under conservation easement if you didn't have the mid-rises, not towers, mid-rises on the beach and across the way. So I'm comfortable with viewing it all as one project, and I do think the community is impacted, and so I think her personal gain on this really is at a level that I'm fine with, with the outcome here. But if Commissioner Layman wants to suggest deferral on this, so that he can consider how we might remove some of the specificity, so that we don't feel like we're bound as much by precedent, I'd be open to that also. So, thank you both.
Yes, Commissioner Layman, I'll, and then I want to ask Mr. Murawski and Mr. Dunbar to weigh in as well. Commissioner Layman, you recognize?
It's hard to follow such a clear statement and good thought as Commissioner Lyle's. He raises the Justice Potter decision-making rule, and I think that's the, it happens with tough questions. It's the least helpful way to make a decision, and part of our job is to help people with clear decisions. Not only am I...
Not only am I concerned about the numbers, because I think we basically said, the numbers should be this, and they aren't, but we're still going to say, okay, if you were to draw it in its extreme, but just using numbers as the predominant or sole decision-making, I think, is also flawed. And, for example, Commissioner Lyle and his comments adverted to a more general view of the project as a whole, and how the community would feel, and so forth, and I think those are valid comments, and they have nothing to do with numbers. But this is the first time that important aspect has been raised, and once again, it would be nice, and I'm not, what I'm saying is that as we go through this and learn and get better, it would be nice, not just in our published decisions one by one, but perhaps with a little looking into it, we would find clearer guidance on how we should approach this. We know there's state law and decision on this issue, and I'd like to know more about it, as a formal part of this body's decision-making. And I'd like us, perhaps, to fish out a few that we will consider in each such thing. For example, distance, related things like noise, traffic, number of properties, and classes, that sort of thing. I do gently disagree with having to consider it as a whole, because I think deciding what the buildings half a mile away will look like is a very different impact to what is directly across the street in terms of conservation easement. So I think, on that basis, she's asked three questions. They're actually three separate questions, and they might have a different basis for decision. I don't want to change this opinion. I think we've done, we've cobbled together something that should survive. The question was properly asked before she had to vote, and I think the basis on which she provisionally went forward, she had to vote, she did not have the option. She could have declared that she had a conflict, but she was strongly suggested to her that she didn't, so she voted. Fine, we should honor that exigency in leaving that in this decision. Finally, there is a little urgency. As I recall, the city attorney said that the design review board issue is coming up before our June 7 meeting, so I think we do need to issue this as it stands. And if, anyway, thank you.
Let me, thank you, Commissioner. Any other, Commissioner Lyle? Chair Jones, do you have any thoughts on this before I turn to Mike and Pete to comment? Chair Jones?
Sorry, I have my video, my audio muted. My only, well, I have two comments. I guess, one is, I do agree with Commissioner Lyle. I think when you have to almost look at it as a project as a whole, and I think that conservation easement has, sure, its effects of people that live near there, but it has very broad implications for everybody in the city of Naples. Now, I also was troubled by the numbers test. I was troubled by the numbers test in our previous decision, as you will recall, so I'm still troubled by it. I don't know that I feel that we've come to the right standard, and I do feel we are, to put it in way less elegant language, we are kind of wishy-washy on it. We're saying the standard's 1%, but we're not following that. And so I'm troubled by that as well. As far as putting out an opinion, I'm okay with deferring the opinion, and perhaps, since the vote's already been taken, but if there's another vote that's pending, then I would probably also agree with, I think, both commissioners, that perhaps we should take a better look at this over the summer, and come back and really maybe analyze what our tests really should be, and perhaps explain ourselves a little bit, at least to ourselves, have a good debate over what we really mean by, as we're looking at numbers tests, and how, I mean, I thought that the test should have been a larger area than just the adjacent properties in the previous decision, and I would probably feel the same way in this one. I would have liked to have used the city standard. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Anyone else before I, let me just ask this question and turn it over to maybe to Mike and to Pete briefly. What is the presidential value of our rendering an opinion? What precedent do we set in doing that, that should hold us up from answering her question now and answering future questions as they arise? Mr. Marowski?
Well, I would think that it's, we're setting precedent, so as these questions arise in the future, we're going to look back to our previous opinions and see, you know, what did we do in these other cases? So, again, there's nothing really written in stone, you know, for this particular opinion. You could issue it today and have discussions and talk about the size of the class and how big you're going to make it. I don't think, if you, it sounds to me like what everybody's interested in doing is making the classes bigger. So if you make the classes bigger, she's still not going to, she's going to have less of a conflict, she won't have a conflict, so the end result's not going to change. And if, for some reason, it did change, you could always go back and just amend the opinion and say, you know, we've reconsidered this, or whatever you're going to do, and we're going to issue some sort of an amended opinion.
But the opinion would be the same, the outcome would be the same.
The outcome is the same, either way.
Mr. Dunbar, give comments or thoughts?
Well, I do have some thoughts, but I'm not sure they're so much legal as they are substantive in terms of the policy that refers to the individual members of the commission. By example, the presidential standard, well, I'm not sure that the presidential standard is particularly relevant, because I would look at this as a question for the, by the person who poses it, one. And, two, unlike the city standard of 500 feet, or 1,000 feet, or whatever it is, they have that in there for whatever reasons the council chose. The judgment being made, if that distance is an issue by this commission, is whether or not there is a benefit to be received, a special benefit to be received, that's the standard. And so, setting a uniform 500-foot, 1,000-foot thing, to me, is not particularly relevant. It is to address the question being posed, to move outside of the question being posed. I wouldn't think, were it me making the decision, I wouldn't find that appropriate to do. So, generally speaking, I'd be happy to discuss it with Mr. Marowski over the summer and see if we can get on the same page, but at the moment, I'm not in the same place, I think.
I think, I would suggest, and I'll defer to the chairperson, but I would suggest that you do that going forward. I don't see a downside. Commissioner Lyle?
Thank you. So I thought I heard our executive director say that there is some presidential value, and then I thought I heard our attorneys say there is not. If there's not, I'm thinking, and Commissioner Jones, you'll see where I'm headed as a student of the tax law, that this really becomes more like a private letter ruling. What we talk about in the IRS world of being able to apply to the government for a ruling of what the government thinks the answer is on your particular facts, and although those are published, that it's very clear that they are not precedent for any other taxpayer. And if that's what we have here, I wonder if we should consider adding a standard paragraph at the bottom of our opinions, that says this is applicable to this particular request and doesn't have necessarily presidential value.
Yes, Commissioner Layman. And then I'm going to get back to Mr. Dunbar and Mr. Marowski, if they have some thoughts on that. Yes, Commissioner Layman.
Commissioner Lyle, I think I heard the same things. But I do remember when we first talked about these formal opinions, as opposed to the informal, that they would stand as a body that others could look to, and if the fact pattern was the same or quite similar, they might rely on without re-asking the question. If we have that sort of private ruling statement, they wouldn't really be able to do that, and we might get the same question back again. In the issue of the 975-J voting conflicts for land development questions, which I think will be at the top of the list over the years going forward, the fact pattern will always be different, because the property will always be different, and the various factors that we might consider will be different. So I'm not sure, but I would, if the chair would permit, ask Mr. Marowski how he viewed the functioning, or the impact of RQOs, or the formal opinions, to other persons, other covered persons who might be seeking guidance, just to get a sense of, I mean, he did this for 20 years, and how does it work?
Mr. Marowski, you're recognized.
So, again, I relied on other opinions as some sort of presidential value. So whenever we had a question that came up, we would look at, you know, the state opinions, can we find something that's similar, you know, how did they analyze it? And, you know, we would basically go through that analysis. I would say that, again, because we're a local ethics commission, we can be stricter than what the state does. And if you look, if you ever get a chance to go look at the state opinions, they are, you will read those fact patterns, and you'll be thinking to yourself, oh, my God, this guy clearly has a conflict and shouldn't vote, and they will say, there's no special private gain, so therefore, they're allowed to vote. And so, and I look to, at least in some way, what the perception to the public is here, where we had, say, you know, Councilmember Christman, who lived right across the street from that development, and that was, you know, going to be a parking garage, you know, 20 feet away from his front window. I look at the perception there. I mean, how would, how do people, you know, look at that? And I think most people, at least the ones I heard from, said, that's clearly a conflict. I mean, you can't allow that guy to vote. So that's, I mean, that's at least one of the things to take into consideration. Do you want to be stricter than the state standard?
Follow-up, sir. Yes, Commissioner Layman?
You raised the issue of a different state versus the city of Naples standards, and is it correct that the state uses special benefit, but ours says benefit?
I think their exact language is special privilege or benefit.
And our language is benefit.
Is benefit, yeah.
Which is broader and essentially stricter.
Yeah.
And since we're using the state test here of, is that, how does that go under benefit, which is much closer to nothing at all?
Well, I still think it's a good analysis to use, with the size of the class. I still think that's a good analysis to follow. It's just, you know, there's that little bit of leeway there to say, well, is this a special private benefit, which, you know, are rare to find, as opposed to just a benefit or a loss?
May I just add an unrelated comment?
Yeah, let me just ask this.
Yeah, please.
Just briefly. If we, if we don't answer the questions as precisely as we are, is that, is that good or is that not good? I'm just, I'm just trying to follow that. In terms of the potential precedent, I mean, I'm back to people asking us questions, and I know Mr. Christman asked a question that we didn't have much trouble responding to. And I don't know, I'm not sure that I understand why we're having, what the order of magnitude of why we shouldn't proceed, as we're proceeding with Councilmember Petronov, in responding to her questions with an analysis that we think is appropriate.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. I think it is more of a case-by-case analysis of each separate situation. I agree with Mr. Dunbar that just adopting that 500-foot rule or 1,000-foot rule, you know, those rules are in place for a completely different reason. And when you use these terms like affected or impacted, and you say, well, any development really affects the whole community, well, in a sense, that's true, but, you know, I'm not as familiar with the area, but somebody who lives in, you know, Aquiline shores, way over on this side of town, is not as affected as somebody who lives, you know, way up north by that side of town. So there's a difference from, between the person who just lives across the street, and you can say, well, everybody in this town is affected by this development, but they're really not affected the same way. So I think, I think that's the difference.
Let me just, before, Commissioner Layman, let me ask Mr. Dunbar if you have any further thoughts before we continue our conversation.
Well, only this, one, I agree with the way Mike just analyzed it, and I do feel like, the questions are specific to the individual asking them. I think Commissioner Lyle put more into my statement than I intended, so I just want to say, that's not what I said, Commissioner, so I would not agree putting the language of private ruling on the bottom of these either, but, other than that, Mr. Vice Chairman, that's all I have.
Commissioner Lyle?
Thank you. So, thanks for that clarification, Commissioner Dunbar, or Attorney Dunbar. So I'm looking at our rules of procedure, and we do say in our rules of procedure that an advisory opinion until amended or revoked shall be binding on the commission and the requesting party, and then we say, the opinion may be relied upon by others until amended or revoked. So I do think, notwithstanding that in other venues in this country, precedent may not have as much value as it used to, that, it took me a long time to figure out how to work that in. Thank you very much. So, anyway, but it seems to be like we may, by our own rules, indicate that there's presidential value.
Yes, Commissioner Layman?
That leads into my point here, because we are creating a precedent. Now, we can change our precedent by specific statements, so I'm not concerned that if we pass this today as it stands, that we can't later say, the rules going forward will be different. And then we have essentially abrogated the non-conforming aspects of today's opinion by our future action. Fine. And whether we change today's text or not, I just want to add that I think that there's two things that we haven't discussed briefly. The land in question for the conservation easement already is in our master plan, a green space. It is open space recreational and cannot be built on unless the city goes to the state and revises the future land use map and the associated language in the community's master plan. So that there, by voting on a conservation easement, there is no fundamental change to the possible uses of that land, so Ms. Petronov does not face development under the current rules, and she will not face development in it, and so there is no change in that land value on that basis. And also, I think we mentioned this in a prior discussion, that property's green space qualities are part of the water management system of the city to avoid flooding. And so there is a very great importance to a large class of people of not developing it. So I think on these various bases, whether we work that into the written opinion, it is at least a record of this meeting that these things are true, and even if we don't have a perfect opinion, we are under the gun, and I would not like to spend time today wordsmithing it again unless other members feel that these additional facts or considerations should be worked in. So I, if the chair would wish, I would move approval as it stands. We have the record of this conversation to come back to, and I'm grateful that we did agree that our two attorneys, not on the commission, would look at the broader question. Because I, Mr. Dunbar, I would agree, that simply saying 500 feet is as dumb as saying 1%, right? It's not considering the complicated facts. And I'm not really proposing 500. I am trying to find something other than a dumb 1%, and a dumb 500 feet is probably not much better, which is why, even if you come back and say, look, there is no simple rule or two or three, but here are the bases on which these decisions are made, economic impact, noise, traffic, visual, and so forth. Or are there intangibles that we will consistently have to deal with each time? That's all I want, is a primer on how we should proceed and do a better job in the future, and have shorter discussions about our opinions. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion that's been made. Chair Jones, do you, anything further you'd like to say before we ask the commissioners to vote?
No, I'm sorry, I have nothing further.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Layman to approve the Petronov opinion letter as drafted. Is there, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Marowski.
So you indicated one change earlier on page four, from redevelopment project to beach club property. So are you, you want me to go through the opinion and change that? You can vote on it today, but with those changes, is it not as drafted?
I would, that was just my observation. I'd ask other commissioners if they disagree. I just want, I think consistency is important.
Yes, I was assuming that the change you had proposed was included in the motion, and I'll specifically state that, that that change throughout the document is part of the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Let me ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Jones?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Layman?
Approve.
Commissioner Lyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardillo?
Yes.
Thank you, members. By your vote, the motion passes unanimously. Next thing on our agenda, let's get back to it, is the executive director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a very brief report, but I do want you all to save the date for our Ethics Conference, which is being planned. We are going to hold that conference on Thursday, March 30th, will be the first day, and then it will end on Saturday, April 1st of 2023. And that's going to be at the Hyatt House Hotel.
Thank you. All the commissioners make a note of those. Thank you. We've done that. Please proceed, Mike.
The only other thing is, we were talking about the budget at the last meeting, and I did get a chance to straighten out a couple of things, which I mentioned to Commissioner Layman earlier at that last meeting. He had a question about our license fees that are coming up for our computers. I spoke to the gentleman in charge of IT right now, Mr. Benjamin. His exact words to me were, that's nothing you need to be concerned about, that they, in fact, at least for this year's budget, that it's, they have this complicated system for all these licenses, they add them up, and then they divide it over all the departments. So he said, we're fine. And I met with Nicole Fulham over in Finance, who was super helpful with me, and went through, and we actually drafted a budget for next year, which is pretty close to what I had shown you guys. There was a question about my salary for the, for last year, so my salary was at $100,000, and, but there was an additional $1,000 in there to cover the mid-year increase that might happen. So she, for next year, even though at about 104 now, they're going to, they're going to budget it, I think she said at 105 or 106, to cover the, you know, the possibility of any mid-year increase. So that will be coming to you hopefully by June. There's some kind of schedule that we have here. I'll be sitting down with Nicole and with the new city manager to go over our budget, proposed budget. Hopefully, I'll be, get a chance to meet with Chair Jones and use her expertise in this area, but I think it's pretty, it's pretty simple, so it should be, should be okay. And then the presentation that I do to the city council, I think that happens in August, where they have a workshop presentation, so I'll give it to them.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Morowski. Anything further?
That's it.
Anything further from our counsel, Mr. Dunbar? Before we adjourn, I think we're at the, well, before the members from, matters from the members of the commission, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Madam Chair?
I have a matter for the commission when we're at that point.
Okay. I know Commissioner Layman does as well, but please proceed. Chair Jones, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the issue that was raised two meetings ago, I believe, regarding some phone calls by Mr. Frelick. We did refer that back to the city manager. And the only other thing I wanted to add to that is, I do think in the future, something like that should probably have been sent directly to the executive director and not raised in a public meeting. If it's an ethics violation, I think they have a right to some confidentiality. And if it isn't, if it's a performance issue, I still think it would be more appropriate to just, to go through the executive director initially, and if it, if it rises to the level of a ethics complaint, then of course it should go through the proper procedures. So that's, I think, partly my fault, and I just feel that those sort of issues should probably have been handled a little more appropriately, rather than brought up in a public meeting and had a discussion in a public meeting. So that's my only comment on it, but we have referred it to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Other, Commissioner Layman?
Thank you. Three items. Recently, we sent, Mr. Morowski sent you a website document, and in the subsequent meeting, I asked for your feedback. And that's still a live issue, but if we don't get feedback in the next week or two, you lose your right of appeal. So you can't come back and say, hey, I don't like this, because it would be both nuisance for Mike and myself and expensive. So please do have a look, see if you like the structure, see if you think the appropriate coverage is there, things to add, things to remove. Really, it will take 10 minutes. And also, we need your bio, or we're going to make you out to be like, you know.
George Baker.
Right. Two or three paragraphs, you know, the kind of thing you'd put out if you were going to join some organization and they wanted to know about you, that kind of thing. Illustrious career, happily living in Naples, and blah, blah, blah. You've got the idea. We'll edit it and give it back to you, but we need you to do the input. Secondly, I brought today, and we'll send electronically to Chair Jones, the city's rules of procedure, because I think they've spent a lot of, they've had this for decades, and they redid them a year ago after the new council was elected. And I think they're just worth a look-see in compared to what we've got. And maybe at some time in the next couple of meetings, we can, we can see if we wanted to take any of their good advice. In particular, I withdraw your opinion to setting the agenda on page, printed page two, section three, some interesting aspects there. And then on the following page, starting at section six, meetings, there's a, you know, a more detailed view of how meetings might be run and recognition by the chair and all that sort of stuff. So well worth looking at. They've been at it longer than we have, and maybe there's something we can learn from that. The final thing is, I have a required disclosure. On April 26, I recused myself from a vote on Mr. Morowski's salary, and I subsequently, within the 15-day period, filed a Form 8B, which must be filed when a public official makes a recusal, which states why I made the recusal, and I have to read that at a subsequent meeting, and I am now doing that. And so this Form 8B says that on April 26, I recused myself. I did so because it would potentially inure to my special private gain or loss. And the reason that I gave was, quote, "The measure before my agency was a vote on the salary increase of the commission's executive director. At the time of the vote, a matter involving me was being investigated by the executive director, creating a clear conflict of interest." And so that form is now appended to the minutes of the April 26 meeting in accordance with the requirements of this matter. So that's the end, Chair. Thank you so much.
Precedent for us to do the same thing, if and when that would occur, I think that's appropriate.
Well, kudos to Mr. Morowski and our city clerk's office, who made sure it happened.
Thank you. Any further comments, commissioners? Anything further, Madam Chair, before we adjourn?
No, I have nothing further. Thank you. Thank you for running the meeting for me.
Well, my pleasure. Just hurry home. Hurry back.
I will hobble back. How about that?
I don't know. This was a pretty effective, efficient short meeting, so.
The, our next, next meeting is June the 7th. And then I noticed on the, just on the schedule for people who just have this automatically, that the meeting in September will be the second week of September, and I guess that's because it's, the 6th must fall on a holiday or something, Mike?
I believe that's, that was the reason, yeah.
And I only mention that because that's good, because I happen to be not available on the 6th, but the 13th works perfectly, so.
Because we had scheduled it for the Tuesday, but the city council wanted our day, and I think we switched it out.
Good for them. Any further discussion? Thanks, members.
Thank you.
Heal quickly, Madam Chair. Heal quickly. Thank you. Thank you, Pete. The meeting is adjourned.
Welcome to the 20, to the March, to the May 14th, 2021 workshop meeting of the City of Naples Planning Advisory Board. If you wish to address the board regarding an item on our agenda today, please complete the registration form at the rear of the room. Please hand it to the city clerk prior to consideration of that item. We also welcome comments on items, on issues not on our agenda. We ask that all speakers limit their comments to seven minutes, and that large groups name a spokesperson whenever possible. Thank you very much for your interest and participation in our city government. Can I have the clerk, please, to call the roll?
Alternate member Codlin.
Yes. Here.
Here.
Member Cross.
Here.
Member DuPont.
Here.
Member Nogart.
Here.
Member Phillips.
Here.
Vice Chair McCann.
Here.
Chair Selfon.
Here.
School Board Rep. Ms. Lockhart.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're all present, and Mr. Codlin, were we to have votes, we'll be voting today, because there's an absent member, but it's a workshop, but welcome again. So we all may now rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, Director Martin, would you like to discuss?
Not Doc Martin anymore.
Changes to the agenda?
Sure. Eric Martin, Planning Director. We have myself and the other directors, Mr. Middleton and Mr. Stracklous, have to leave today at 10:00. So we, I discussed with the chairman, we are going to touch on, we had the discussion of the intergovernmental coordination and capital improvements and concurrency management elements from the last meeting. There were a couple of specific questions that I've provided to Mr. Middleton and Mr. Stracklous that they can answer, so we're going to wrap those elements up first, and then we really will probably only have time to touch on one of the elements. I thought maybe the public facilities element, because there are stormwater and utilities implications in that one, and we have those two directors. So if it's okay with the board, we will probably push the transportation element to the next meeting. And then at the end, we will discuss the density in the downtown district, and you'll discuss that with Leslie, because I won't be here.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any objection to that order of business for today? And as we were just saying a moment ago, we do not have a workshop meeting scheduled for the Friday after our June meeting. And at the end of the day, we see how we're doing, we can think about whether we'd like to schedule that to pick up the other element, or wait until August and give people more time to make their, their travel plans.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Doc Martin?
Thank you. Totally undeserved, but I will get, while we're in discussion today, I'll see if I can get some dates from the clerks on the availability of chambers in the month of June.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we did say, as Vice Chair McCann reminded me, that we weren't going to do that.
Right.
But things change, there's a lot going on.